This conference will now be recorded.
Thirty will bring the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Spielman.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Mayor Gengler.
Here. We will open with the opening prayer and pledge of leaven. If you would like to stand to join us. Pledge will be done by Lieutenant Isquardo.
Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for bringing us here together again. Again means we're still here, still alive, still have sound minds. We still have compassion and passion for our community. We're grateful for this opportunity and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We ask that you would bless us with wisdom and understanding that we would make decisions in the better interest of the greater community. We ask that you would just let your unity define our discussions and that you would continue to have a covering over this community as a whole. Keep us safe from harm and danger. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Stan.
Thank you.
Recognition of, oh wait, I'm sorry. Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I wish to add an executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to TS A 75319B1, personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
The, it has two or three parts. It has, it has to be a short description of what actually you're talking about.
That's personnel matters.
That's the legal justification. Has to be a factual underpinning for it, according by statute.
Discussion with the Chief Fire Department, with Larry, and Director of EMS.
Okay. So seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Satisfy the requirement.
The purpose of discussing the fire chief?
Personnel matters with the fire chief.
Discussion of that fire chief. Is it, okay.
It's not discussion of the fire chief, is it? Not discussion of the fire chief, is it? What is it?
How would you like it, Warren?
Well, I don't know what it is.
You said you want him in the meeting so it wouldn't be up unless you want him in there up.
Good.
So can we, can we? Can we give a context? Is it, is it staffing related?
Yes.
Okay. How about, does that satisfy?
That would.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Didn't mean to be difficult, but it.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
And a second.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So that's added to the agenda. And now we have approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I second it.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. Do we have anyone that was asking to speak?
No.
Okay. Awards and proclamations.
Life-saving award presented to Michael Isquardo, Corey Tuckshorn, and Travis Stroud from the Arkansas Police Department, and Dan Dietrich, Lieutenant Joshua Bacher, Will Hankins, AEMT from the Arkansas City Fire Department.
Sir, has he? Can I sit down here?
Please.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Soul Medical, as you know, issues life-saving awards to the following people that Leslie identified. Firefighter paramedic Dan Dedrick, Lieutenant Josh Bacher, and firefighter AEMT Will Hankins, and Arkansas City Police Officers Corey Tuckshorn, Michael Squaredo, and Travis Stroud was inadvertent. I left off one that we did previous this year, so we would like to rectify that today, tonight. So on June 5th, 2022, EMS and ACPD responded to a 68-year-old patient with cardiac respiratory arrest. CPR was in progress. Sorry, I'm cold. Patient was successfully resuscitated, transported to a hospital, later transported north. Patient was hospitalized for five days and discharged back to her home. That could not have happened without the quick thinking of everybody on that scene. Everything worked perfect. Scene time was short. Patient, they got pulses back before they got into the hospital. So we, at the fire department, along with Soul Medical, would like to recognize those people tonight.
So was it a piece of equipment that they used?
Both pieces are cardiac monitor defibrillator. I'll be asking for new ones next year. And our mechanical CPR device. They specifically give them when the auto pulse is used.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you got any words?
I don't really have anything else before I was here, but good job everybody.
Can you each come up and get your award?
Travis? I apologize brightly for leaving you out on the February case. You, you helped that patient greatly. I apologize by my heart. It was not intentional and I do apologize, but I wanted to make sure.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Can we have them maybe move up here and all stand separately together as opposed to?
Yeah, we're gonna have you stand.
Coming along?
Yeah, one at a time.
Aye over this way.
Corey?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I can never say nothing, so I would like to go first.
Where do?
And then.
Good job, man.
This is one for the department. UMS subs want to come up? You will get yours at the, at our Christmas party because Chief elected to give you, we're gonna do an award ceremony at our Christmas party. So that's when you will get your award. But here, Dan, is the one for the department.
Oh, okay.
Thank you guys.
It happened the police department. Each of the officers will receive a life-saving pin that they can put on their uniforms.
Wow.
Very, very nice of them. Just pass it down. That's something I learned as a military. Yeah.
We do have it as a form.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your hand.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hold on to that.
Thank you guys. Good job. I appreciate you. Good job to have you.
Sure you do. Thank you. Thank you. You do. Congratulations.
We all go the wrong way here.
Congratulations.
You're still doing great, by the way.
Don't do that. Thanks.
Did you even, no, no. You didn't even come in and see him do the pledge. He did, he's got a certificate too.
He got almost.
Equal to your certificate you got. There you go.
But, that's my understanding.
And the whole crowd leaves. They come to it in and they're going out, bye-bye.
You got it.
Hold him down.
And that's how you clear a room. Give the awards in the beginning. Ready? Comments? We already passed that. Consent agenda for the approval of the November 1st regular minute meetings.
I'll make the motion we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor. Oh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do business.
Consider first reading of an ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan to become effective November 19th. We do have that date to the pay ordinance, and this is solely within the fire EMS department. Since Chief Lederer came over, we had some changes that he wanted to make. One of those being no longer having the full-time just paramedic position. That was removed. And we added a firefighter, paramedic, part-time position. We are trying to fill in with some part-time people to maybe help with some of the callback and the long, long hours. So one position was removed, one position was.
So it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that finance was the one that said, get rid of it because of the amount of overtime that paramedic-only position was doing.
Finance did not direct that to be done away with. There was, there were talked about that eventually.
Yeah, I'm not saying directed. I'm just saying that it was a lot of overtime in that paramedic-only position. Is that not right?
Yeah, I can explain it very briefly if you'd like me to. For the Federal Labor Standards Act, there is an exemption called the 7K exemption for first responders. First responders are defined as firefighters and police officers. So when we have positions that were strictly paramedic, they had to go by the regular work week, 40-hour overtime threshold. Okay? So they were still working as sort of like a normal position, 2080. Twenty, 2008 to 20920. That additional difference was scheduled overtime.
Yeah.
And that was done, that started way back when Chief Wolf was here, finding a lot of trouble recruiting paramedics. And then a lot of times people don't want to be a firefighter that are paramedics. So we did that in a crunch and it is an overtime-heavy situation and so.
I'm not saying it was good or bad. I'm just saying that one of the reasons.
Why there was, why it was different than others.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we have any full-time paramedics left? I mean, are we still doing, are we slowly going, getting rid of that quote position to get rid of that overtime hour question?
So again, do we have any, just?
Now, it sounds like we're getting, we're trying to eliminate the quote, the full-time paramedic due to the overtime hours. Is that what, or not? So, Christ, no?
Just the paramedic only position.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yes, that's, yes, I mean, the full-time paramedic position. Yes, yeah, that was my question, yes.
Do we have any of them left? One had decided to take a different position. And then the other two, we have moved them to an actual firefighter, paramedic.
I assumed they were getting redirected, that was it, yeah.
And that was just the last. I won't be.
Correct. We looked at the numbers. We looked at the numbers anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000 in just overtime for three paramedic police. That's pretty significant. I can, I can do a few things with, with that much money. So doing our due diligence, I looked into it and we were able to have a discussion with all three of them and say, hey, we'd like to go this direction because anything, a paramedic only, anything after 40 hours, they have to get paid overtime. Whereas a firefighter after 53 hours, then they get paid overtime. And so with the savings in, in the funding, that's kind of why we went that direction.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Anybody else have any questions?
Slow guy over here on this.
Okay, slow guy, go ahead.
Firefighter slash paramedic part-time position. Firefighter slash paramedic is part-time?
Yes, sir. We have, we have both. We have both. We have full-time firefighter, paramedic. And we have, want to create the firefighter, paramedic, part-time so that we can hire some people, maybe from other departments or something, to kind of backfill where we have callback or short shifts or something like that.
Okay, can we do that and satisfy training credentialing or qualifying issues? Can we do that effectively?
Absolutely. That's where the training officer in-house came about as well. So now we can do most of the training in-house within our own department.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
With that being said, I make a motion we accept the first reading of the ordinance adopting the budget plan or pay plan to become effective November 19th, 2022.
I second it. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I still want to be educated on this. Why do we reference this as a first reading as opposed to simply a reading of an ordinance?
We just always introduce all ordinances as first reads. You can adopt it on first read.
Are you saying you would like that wording changed?
Well, it just implies that there may be a subsequent reading and the way I, every time I see it, I think we're gonna, you're gonna present this and then we're gonna have this come back again in a subsequent meeting. You know, so, I mean, if, if it's something that is not, if we're not obligated to do a subsequent reading, I don't know why we specify that this would be the first.
You have so many readings for us to quote. Darren, you'd have 10, so then, yeah. Yeah.
What I understand is just as a courtesy to introduce the item to the commission, for the commission to decide if they don't want to take any action, it will just go to a second read. But if you want to take action on it, we've just introduced ordinances that way. If you want to change it, we can absolutely change it. There's nothing that's statutory that.
Well, I, I'll confess that where I struggle with this is that is actually the second word that you added in there. I'm from the era of first statutory readings, which was an era when the state law required certain matters before we could codify them, before we could make an ordinance of them, that we would present it multiple times to the general public. Also like we do the budget, where we have a first reading, a first hearing, a second reading, a second hearing, a third reading, a third hearing type thing. So when I see first, my mind is all the way back to the stone ages when, when it was obligatory that you would do more than one reading and that was to keep, to assure that we were transparently communicating to our public before we took some act of commissioning or sanctioning an ordinance that would impact people.
Have you attorney?
So.
Say again?
Suggest is maybe not use the word first reading, just bring it before the commission. If the commission decides not to act, then put the word second reading the next time to remind us that it's been there before. That might eliminate the confusion. Just.
That's what you're directing me to do, that's what I will do.
I think it'll eliminate confusion if there's confusion on it.
That all right with you?
That's just a suggestion. I think you all decide what you want to come to you.
Do we, we don't need to vote to decide that though, do we?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, I guess. I, I lost that in statutory obligation to do a subsequent second and third reading. And I wondered how that kind of morphed over into things that don't require second or third.
Probably just somewhere along the line paralleled it because it was.
Okay, all right.
Be my guess. I wasn't there when it was created, but I'd be, yes.
I'm, and again, I'm sorry for delaying the meeting for this purpose, but I just said, well, just ask. So it's, it's just cultural, is what you're saying. That, yeah, it's, it's part of the, part of this commission's culture.
Would you like to consider what Commissioner Jennings is saying and delete the words first reading?
Madam Mayor, I feel edified if that helps and, and they don't feel like it needs to be addressed. I just, I just needed to get some separation between statutory, first statutory versus first reading. My, okay, so we can.
We can pretend that, that six minutes didn't happen. How about that?
Now we vote.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Commissioner Jennings.
Was it aye or yes?
Which one do you prefer?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Spielman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Gengler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second. Go ahead.
Consider resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to execute a renewed
All the details of that agreement are the same as in the past except for the, the compensation will go from $3,500 to $3,570. Another contractual folks in the city got raises with that $100 an hour last year. So this would kind of help with that with Larry. So. Same.
It's not actually up until December, is it? Your contract, end of the year, huh?
Yeah, it isn't. This doesn't affect January, I believe. Yeah. First.
So we tabled it, it would not until next meeting?
That's totally up to you all.
I just stopped my packet, so I haven't had a chance to read through it.
Okay, I'll wait too. How about I just do this? I move we table this until our next committee, next commission meeting. Give us a chance to look it over and discuss it in a work session.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So we shall have the second obligatory.
Have to call it that. Have to call it a second reading.
Been moved and seconded. Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next.
Consider resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the commission to provide mutual aid to each other in an event of an emergency within each under's range of resource capabilities which we find are the most apparatus, witness, and manpower as requested and available.
This will be something that mutual aid agreements tend to happen a lot, especially with smaller departments because of the limited resources. And anytime you're limited resources, limited personnel, you always request from your friends, whoever's closest to you. And this is one that we've, I've got with their DM, DEM, and he's the one that actually reached out to us wanting to do this. And I believe it's gonna be a good, a good match for both of us. There, even though they're on Oklahoma, we're over here. Since we're right on the border, it's always good to have as many resources as you can, you can get when we have limited personnel and, and limited apparatus. So I plan on doing this with a few that are around us. We have automatic and mutual aid agreements with Minfield and they're just as busy as we are. So Call Nation will be another one that we'd like to put on that list.
I have a question. How's that handled? I mean, say somebody has an accident down there, do they, do they call Newkirk first? They call us or how's that gonna work? I mean.
So that's Newkirk's jurisdiction. They will call us. Anytime it's your jurisdiction, whatever resources you have, you take to that, to that area. And once you exhaust your resources, you request help. And that's when you can reach out, you know, and from other departments and that's.
So in other words, Newkirk Fire Department, say had a fire, we'd come first. If they had help, then they'd call us and we'd have to be the backup or.
As long as we can provide apparatus and personnel and services as well. That's something that we, if we're doing, if we're busy and we don't have those resources to, to give them, then we, you know, we can deny that. So it's not an automatic thing, but.
But how do we get, how do we get paid for that? If we had to go down to put out a fire out, you know, use our equipment and stuff, will they reimburse us or just?
That's where it comes back and forth.
Okay, reciprocal.
We help you, you have.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to kind of understand.
So Call Nation uses Newkirk? Or do they have their own?
Yes.
Does Call have their own?
In certain areas, yes. Certain apparatus, they have certain fire, they have certain emergency management. Sometimes Newkirk covers a certain part of their area. Tell you the truth, I can't remember what it's called. Chico, Chico.
Salaco.
Salaco.
I got a tree I can't pronounce.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's one of Call Nation's areas. That's really close to.
Wouldn't have got Chico either.
Yeah. But that's what we're looking to do. Like I said, I'm working on a few other ones, so this won't be the first one you'll see. But there's a few that have reached out to us, especially for major incidents where all resources are tapped, they'll start calling.
So when you say you can deny them, they're not gonna get mad and?
There's an understanding there of, hey, we don't have the resources to give you.
Okay.
And vice versa.
They probably have this agreement with other places too, so. If we're the closest, so they'll call us first and then they'll move on.
Absolutely. And then this is, this is kind of a standard, a national standard type, happens all the time.
So Call is east, south? I was really, I was. Southie, four, yeah. I was really close on that one. And then, so like those wrecks and stuff they have on the highway, is this?
Possibly. That could be something like that.
Can they extend further than I thought they did? Okay.
I've been working with Newkirk. Blackwell has actually reached out to us as well. And so there's, yeah, there's a few. Especially with the grass fire possibilities out here, the tornado, you know, so large.
Commission, anything further?
No.
So we gotta vote on this.
Voice vote too. Leslie can't stop me this time.
That's too many words. I move we consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Call Nation to provide. with Call Nation to provide mutual aid to each other in the event of an emergency within each other's range of resources, capabilities, including fire and EMF apparatus, equipment and manpower as requested and available.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You guys don't.
It's like.
These are, you can, let's just say, it's just becoming too much of, I mean, we just have it forever? Or, I mean, is it one of those things we just keep forever? Is it just one of those, we can say, like you said, we don't have the resources today, we just can't help on this incident or accident?
Yeah.
I should have as a forever agreement or?
You can always back that if you, if we need to or want to. But for the most part, most people don't come out and go out of a mutual agreement just because of you always want to have, you always have the most friends that you can get. Yes, it's always, there's an understanding there that, hey, we could help, we would help if we could, we just can if we can. If we can, we will.
I think you guys are going to like the times that I missed. Are we considering this or are we adopting it?
We're adopting it.
Adopting it.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt this?
Yeah.
Resolution?
Okay, okay, I want to just clarify. We're not just, we're not, we're not voting to consider.
Let's. It's adopted.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Charles, anything? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Other items for consideration?
Approve the employee dental insurance for twenty twenty-three plan year.
Can you put the other one there too?
Good evening.
Again. Good evening.
And can you believe the start of any year? We're talking, we're talking demo right now. We'll talk health in just a minute. We only had a ten cent increase per member on the dental. Now that our dental plan is self-funded, so what that means is we pay an administrative fee for each employee that's enrolled. It's going to be five dollars and fifty cents a month for employee enrolled in twenty twenty-three versus five forty in twenty twenty-two. That's the total of about another hundred and twenty dollars a year for administrative costs. And then the way it works is they administer everything, and then we pay their administrative fee, five fifty a month, plus all costs up to fifteen hundred dollars of allowable charges for each person on the plan. So they did suggest that we fund it at about ninety-four thousand dollars. That, so the ninety-four plus the, the five fifty a month for each person is the total that the dental plan would cost. So the only, the increase is ten, ten cents per person for administrative fees. And you never know on self-funded, if it's going to hit that suggested limit or not. Maybe below, maybe right out. So we're doing, we're doing fine on our dental, I think. I think everybody likes the plan. It's just another year of renewal.
We paid ninety-four thousand last year for it?
No, we, actually, we paid what they, it's the.
Well, I mean, ten cents.
Funding. So last year they suggested around eighty-one. This year they're suggesting around ninety-four. What comes in, we don't know.
If, if the employees don't use that, do we lose that?
If the employees don't use that whole fifteen hundred, we don't have to pay it. We only pay what's allowable. Yes.
Dental experts.
Stay off the record on the dental insurance side of things. It's been fifteen hundred for many, many years now. From Delta, from just insurance companies. Cost of dentistry has gone up and the insurance has stayed the same.
So is, is it done where they do contracts like they do on medical stuff?
What do you mean like?
You're saying, so it's allowable fifteen hundred?
Yes.
But I have to have something else done. So does the employee have to pick up the difference?
Yes. How that works is, let's say, I'm just make it simple. If, if you go to a dentist that is contracted with Delta Dental, that means automatically as the dentist, I will take a write-off. So if it's, let's just say it's a thousand dollar crown, Delta is going to say, we're going to pay eight hundred. So then automatically two hundred goes away. That, the dentist can't collect and the patient's not responsible for. So then of that eight hundred, the, the Delta Dental may say, you, you, the patient owe fifty percent. So then you pay four hundred and then the patient would pay the other. The insurance would pay four hundred, the patient pay the other four hundred. So as a dentist that signed up for Delta, you're taking a write-off right away. You don't see that money. It's like when you sign up for Medicaid or Blue Cross Blue Shield or any of the others. By signing up for it, you're hoping that those people at that insurance come to your office. That's kind of, so. So yes, you're automatically taking a hit. The doctor supposedly is the dentist is, and then the patient's responsible for fifty or eighty percent, or twenty percent, I should say, of that allowed amount per procedure.
He is the expert.
That's why I said dental doctor expert.
So plus thirteen, what's her?
So then of that fifteen hundred, if you, if the, you pay, if Delta pays four hundred of it, you technically have theoretically eleven hundred dollars left in benefits. Then you're cleaning and your x-rays, they pay eighty percent of that. So then that would take that down to so much. That's just a simple, easy math way to do it. It's probably not exactly that. So.
Right.
Every Delta plan's different, so.
So are the employees using?
Yes, we have very good utilization. And as a matter of fact, the utilization in the dental network is extremely good. And they, they do go to our provider's hand in town. We, we get that data. And all of the family members are using these plans. So healthy teeth.
A lot of the specialists that you would have to get sent to accept Delta Dental, so if you had an oral surgeon or an endodontist or a periodontist, they, a lot of them will at least file the Delta, so.
And a deal?
Yeah.
That's a good deal.
So the only question now, how does our census, this is, this is twenty twenty-three. What's our staffing census look like for twenty twenty-three? Same as this year? We have the same number of employees?
We do. We run about a hundred, between a hundred and twelve to a hundred and twenty at any given time.
How many slots do we have?
Well, that, now that, we do have more than that. We run closer to a hundred, a hundred and thirty-ish on that. But some of those are, you know, summer positions and things like that. So I don't want to count those. So honestly, I would say right now.
But they don't, but seasonal doesn't come on our benefits.
Insurance, so those would not count. We truly, other than, we do have some openings in police, and we do have some openings in fire. We've got a couple of openings on. We've got a couple of openings in this area. But otherwise, we're doing, we are truly, in my opinion, doing well on staffing. Police and fire is a little tough. And then, of course, you know, as you all know, staffing is just difficult right now anyway. But I could, I personally think we're doing well. And I know that our supervisors are working hard on it. I know that HR, staffing and hiring is our number one priority. We set other things aside. So, yeah, I think we're doing well. And I would, I digress, but we did have some training. I want to let you know. At the third of the month, we had capers and KPNAs come down. We didn't have a great attendance, but we're going to keep working on that. And they educated the employees on their benefits because capers and KPNAs are such fantastic benefits. Then last week on Thursday, we did our anti-harassment, anti-discrimination training. And then tomorrow is open enrollment for all of, for these types of things. So it's been a busy month.
Well, that being said, I make a motion to approve the employee dental insurance for two thousand twenty-three plan year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You're biting your tongue.
Well, I, I was, okay, so I was at the, you said from eighty-one to ninety-four. You say our staffing looks incredibly similar.
That's correct.
For your, so our cost per employee
Correct.
is being increased.
Dental costs are increasing like.
And that's.
Everything else.
About fifteen percent.
But they're not paying anymore. The insurance isn't covering anymore. Like you said, it's been fifteen hundred years.
Well, and this is.
Yes, yes. Frustration amongst a lot of people.
This is funny in that there are several people that don't even meet that fifteen hundred on their expenses. So.
Definitely coming for two cleanings a year. I mean, they're not coming anywhere near that.
Right.
That's all, and x-rays. I mean, need to fill in or two in that, and you're still not going to hit your fifteen hundred.
But you're saying a lot for ninety-four thousand. If we don't spend, we don't ninety-four thou, I mean, if we don't incur ninety-four thousand, we don't spend.
Right.
Ninety-four thousand. Okay, that's, that's where I'm trying to get to is.
Yeah.
Is, is, so that doesn't say our cost per employee goes up, it just, yeah, okay, thank you.
An actual number they come up with, actuary?
Oh, yeah. Yes, that's, they're way above.
Crystal ball.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, you're right.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that piece of, all right. No further questions, Madam Mayor?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
I'll pose the same sign.
Thank you.
Oh, giddy, healthcare.
Oh, this is the big one. Here we go. All right, well, I'll tell you what. Every year, around about the first week of August, we get nervous because you never know what you're going to come in. At five percent was budgeted, and we were fortunate enough to come in at an increase of three point five, which is very good.
That's extremely good. Extremely good.
Yes, I was, I was here when it was twenty-one percent.
It's, most businesses are probably averaging twelve to twenty percent somewhere, depending on where you're at.
Absolutely. So we.
I remember what I was this year.
I have relief. And so what we are proposing is that we continue on the plan we have right now and continue with the current payroll deductions for employees, continuing to keep our eye on the trends, know what's going on by viewing utilization reports on our plan frequently, being educated in case we do have to make a change. Because we all know that day's going to come.
Right. Randy, the lady who, I can't remember her name.
Freedom Claims.
Freedom Claims, right. Where are we with that?
They ran side by side this year. There were, there was a potential to, to save some money, but.
Yeah, I thought.
But with this being such a flat rate and stuff, it just seems like it's best to just stay with what we have.
Nation should.
Okay.
Upset the card.
And so when does her contract?
Yeah, so it's about over.
Okay.
We're not planning on renewing that.
Oh, we wouldn't, okay.
So the estimated additional annual cost is about sixty thousand dollars. That's three point five percent.
So how much are we paying for healthcare?
The whole year?
The enchilada.
We are paying about one point six.
One point six million dollars. For a hundred and thirty?
Probably on the plan right now, I would say hundred and six, probably. Majority of those being family plans. We're very heavy on family. It, it, it's a tremendous amount of money, I will say. I wish some of the folks would have said, well, I've been here a while, and I'm pretty ready to. Match except the value.
Value of it, absolutely. And, and we really have thought to take that on as a commission rather than pass that on to the employees.
Yes, you have. And they're aware of it, and they are appreciative. I will tell you that last year, finance ran reports for the employees, I don't know if you heard about it, showing them their total compensation, showing them their regular rate, plus adding all of their bennies on top of it. And there were some surprised people out there. And I think we planned to do it again this year.
Basically, what they're saying is, here's what your hourly rate is, here's what you made with health insurance, here's what dental insurance is, what you made with everything. So then this is actually what you technically made, yeah, plus.
All these things that do cost.
All adds up.
Yes, and they may not see it, but this, this one is, this one and the capers and KPNAs are the very important benefits for our employees, specifically the water.
Okay. Commission, any additional questions?
I move we approve the employee health insurance for twenty twenty-three plan year.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the health insurance. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
I'll pose the same sign. Can we switch the staff presentations, if you mind?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I want to thank you on behalf of all of the employees and events.
Neighborhood services? Yeah, we're just going to switch you and city manager's report.
Updated eight twenty-two. First one is the first. Type, I should say, was to come in and sign. And it tells everything that he was supposed to do, that time period, thirty days. And they got the fourteen day extension, and we shortened that up. That's all, why not all the send it?
Okay.
He has fulfilled the majority of what we thought that. My thing that I seen was the very north wall hadn't had any. He told me that it would be done tonight.
Okay.
I was going to go by there tomorrow morning and check it out.
So.
There too.
Are you wanting to give him another fourteen day extension or what?
That's completely up to you.
Well, like your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is to go ahead and give it another fourteen days and line out something for us to do, like finish up the siding on the house, get that completely done.
Okay.
And that fourteen days. And after that, if he meets that regulation, we get the accomplishment. We go ahead.
Move on.
Do you need a motion for that or not?
I don't think, this is just his letter to do, get this done. The, the action's already been taken by the commission. This is just.
Okay.
I'll write another letter for him to sign.
We'll give a contentious, Mr. Nichols, did you want to speak to us? Okay.
Siding.
He's gonna ride it up.
He'll ride it up.
He'll ride it up.
Okay. And can the mayor just voice our concurrent support for the recommendation of staff?
Yes.
The fourteen day support, yes, I think we're all.
The support of the commission for the fourteen day extension.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. City manager reports on upcoming activities.
So the, the. The TEEP study, I reached back out to the engineer working on that. They're still working through information and the quality control of the information, so. He wouldn't give me a date this time. Last time it was the end of the, end of October, and now they're saying they, they're still working through it, so.
What's the TEEP study?
It's the one for the traffic study around.
Yes, yes.
And again, that's funded by KDOT, so we don't have a lot of control over any of that. Rate reviews, we're still working on those. We're looking at water, wastewater, trash and stormwater. Rent and financial has just been inundated with, they have to do financial reviews for the loans for KDAHE. And they had fifty of them thrown on their lap saying, hey, you need to review the financials for that. So it's slowing our, our stuff down, so, but it's still in the, in the works. The downtown alley project, it's getting out to bid. There's three contractors interested in bidding, but it's part of Newton Mize Construction and, and Noak. So we should have bids received by mail on.
So we should have bids received by mail on Wednesday, November 30th on that, so we'll have a better idea on that. The travel center, I had a phone conference with the developers last Thursday. And they are moving forward. They're finishing up their design work with the engineer and architecture. They're going to be ready to start doing the site grading in the near future. And I've been in contact with the Algo Quinn consultants that we used before, got, got some pricing for them to come in and do the oversight of the grading, so, and they've agreed to be there on site and work through that. There. The Madison Avenue C-Clip, that's the oatmeal and overlay on Madison from, from Summit to 8th. That, the bidding will be open December 14th for that, and so then we'll see what they want to do time-wise, whoever's awarded. The 15th Street Bridge, we're still kind of in a, waiting for them to get materials in. So everything's kind of moving forward, except for they can't get some of the materials to build it, and we're waiting on that.
But we will handle Castle, right, which they saw.
Yeah, the bid's the bid. The wastewater treatment plant, everything's still moving good out there. They got the, one of the new digester lids installed, and they removed the old one yesterday, the other old one yesterday to get ready to replace it. They'll have to do the cleaning and all the work inside the digester now. And again, they'll be here in January to give, to give the commission an update on the project. Yesterday, the water department should have received the neoprene waterproof gloves for the, for the guys over winter, the diving gloves that you've asked for. Ted was here yesterday to talk about the housing resurgence program. So it's a program they have where if they, they can get a house donated, or one of our land bake or something, they have funds to, to remodel it, then they'll turn around and sell it, flip it, and then use that funds to go into another house. So we're going to try to find a house. Scared, yeah. So we're going to try to find a property here that we can kind of get in that program and kind of get that rolling, you know? It's, it's a onesie-twosie-at-a-time thing, but it, it helps. To remind you of the, this November 21st, the elected official reception in Wichita, it's from 5:30 to 7:30 if you want to go to that. They'll have all the elected officials from the region, local electeds, and usually state electeds will be there as well. December 2nd is our employee Christmas party.
Who's it at?
Should be an invitation coming out. That's a Friday evening. And then.
Sorry?
And then I left an invitation on your table for December 15th, the South Central Kansas Legislative Delegation will have a meeting in Wichita. Again, that would be all the, kind of the, the South Central Region legislation. It's just before they start, you know, going into the legislative session, so it'd be a good time to meet with them and see what's going on, so. That's all I got.
Are we ready for executive session? Okay.
I move that the governing body recess to an executive session to discuss staff. Present to KSA 754319B1, personnel matters of non-elected personnel, including the fire chief, the EMS director, lawyer, and commissioners.
Okay, how, how long?
For a minimum of 30 minutes. So there'd be. Figure that out.
I just, okay. Well, I think we have to, to be in compliance. We have to say for a period of, and, and when we will return back.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to think. So it'd be 6:54.
6:54. Okay, and I'm sorry, I told you, you guys should get sick of me, but you want to clarify that when we say the lawyer, we're specifying our city attorney, not just.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify with aye.
Madam Mayor, will, will there be any action to take place after the executive session?
There will be no action.
Okay, to clarify that, I will read that.
Right. All in favor say aye. I'll pose the same sign. Motion carries. This conference will now be recorded.
I mean, do I need to come out of session?
Motion to extend.
I move to extend our executive session to 7:14.
Sorry.
All in favor signify with aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
They're going to extend this.
Okay, 10 minutes will be at.
You want to extend the executive session for 10 minutes?
For 10 minutes. I'm going to look at the clock.
Need a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
To include the same?
All oppose, same sign.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're back in. Any further items to come before the commission?
Make a motion during.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Have anything else?
Nope, he's good.
I do have, I do have, I do have.
Jayhawks are playing tonight.
All in favor, say aye.
Jayhawks are playing tonight, but I want to bring to your attention, if you all hadn't seen it, an invitation from Legacy Regional Community Foundation, a closer look at the Cali Kids data about, talking about disparate numbers on health-related issues in our county. I think the invitation was sent to, if I'm not mistaken, to the members of the governing body. Please consider, please consider attending.
Okay. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.